Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming in this evening. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the prior meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections, if they would be kind enough to share them. Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Make the motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Takes care of the minutes. A series of public hearings tonight. The first is a zoning amendment on privacy fences at corner lots.
Yes, so if you'll recall, the last planning commission meeting, we talked about this particular topic briefly. And what the planning commission had asked me to do at the end of all that was to do some research about ordinances that exist in other cities in Minnesota that kind of talk about this particular topic. And so included in my memo, you can see some examples that I've pulled from other cities. Basically, what I found is that, you know, every city has their own ordinances, so it's a little bit difficult to compare. But with that, some cities have different definitions for corner lots, you know. In Casson here, we consider corner lots to have two front yards and two side yards. Well, that's not true for every single city. Some say that they have side yards just like any other interior lot. Some cities have transparency rules, like we have here in Casson, where you can't have a fence that with transparency greater than 50% in a front yard. Not every city has that rule. But probably the most similar one that I would say to what we have here in Casson is from the city of Plymouth. And so I've just got an excerpt here of their fence code with a little graphic here showing kind of what they allow. So that's what I've got for my research. And then with that, I've included some proposed code language that would allow people who have corner lots to put fences with transparency over 50% in one front yard. And so to illustrate this point, I've put together some drawings here. Didn't make it into the full packet, but I've got it on Dropbox. So here, this one you're familiar with, this is the center household. And so basically, this area and here is the area where they'd be allowed to build under the current ordinance. And then the hatched area is where they'd be able to build with the proposed code change. So you can see it just extends out a bit further here, up to the property line, which they would get with a CUP. But, you know, you can see here, it's essentially what we would consider a side yard if it were an interior lot. But not every property is as neat as the center lots is. Some homes are a bit wonky, because we don't require your house to completely face the street. So, yeah, this is one household here where the front wall of the house, you know, faces the corner. And so, you know, with that, if we change the code, they could build in this additional area here. So it just gives them a bit more usage of their yard.
They're still gonna always require that CUP, though.
Correct.
That was giving. It would just eliminate the need for a variance.
That's correct. So with, yeah, with all of these, they would still require a CUP simply for having a fence, a privacy fence within the front yard. And then if they also wanted to put it within that three-foot distance, they could combine that into one CUP. So that's how I've had it designed right now. And then this here is just one other regular example that I have here. So you can see it's just a bit more usage of their full lot there. And so with all of that, this is the code language. Everything that I've added isn't read. I think I've touched on everything that's included here. If there are any questions from the commissioners?
So as I read your recommendations, sir, no portion of the fence or wall projecting into the front yard of a property shall exceed 36 inches in height unless one of the more following is met. The height is required by the city for screening, buffering, or safety. The transparency of the fence is 50 cents or 50% or more, pardon me. Or, and as the third one on corner lots, such fences may be placed within one required front yard area that lies between the sidewall of the principal building and the abutting street? Okay. Would it make sense to make a C in there that says "on corner lots"? So you've got an A and a B and a C. An A is the height is required by the city. B is the transparency of the fence is 50% or more. And C is unspecified to...
Um...
I like that better, too, because all the stuff you added and read has nothing to do with transparency. So it kind of doesn't...
Well, if I'm somebody coming off the street trying to understand it, that's how my mind works. That doesn't mean that's how everybody works, but...
Um, in this language here, such fences does refer to fences that are 50% or more.
Yeah, so we're gonna require it to be transparent no matter what, because that's just a rule. So I think he's saying, because they already, they have to be 50% or more for privacy, you know, for fences in the front yard. Then he's adding that. I see what you're saying. Well, let's do some clarification, maybe. We could clarify a little bit more, but...
So you can't have a privacy fence on a corner lot?
Not in the front yard.
Not in the front yard.
No, and we're not, I think he's not recommending changing that. I know, for example, you'll recall the one that's further up on Highway 57, that we ended up having to go and I had to have them take half the slats out, because it was a white plastic fence. So we took half the slats out. That was, and it ended up being the best solution, because it got it to the 50% transparency. We ran into that, where they both put fences up. The one across the street was only 36 inches, and the one across the street was solid white. And we ended up having to do that, so...
So again, I'm not trying to be sick or confrontational. There's two front yards on a corner lot. If it's on a front yard, it has to be 50% transparent. So you can't have a privacy fence that would... Okay.
Yeah. What they did was, for the part that abuts the front yard, that's where they have that 50% transparency, and then it goes to a solid fence.
Right. But I think the issue with the way you got it here is since it's part of Section B, you say, "One of the following must be met." So it says, B, the transparency must be 50 or more, and then you allow corner lots to have it in the front yard. That's still saying it has to be 50% or more. So unless you put it in C...
So you can't have a privacy fence, basically, on a corner lot, is how I understand this.
Right. Unless you put it in C, and then you would have that option.
You get what they're saying, Kevian?
Um, not entirely.
Because if you read this right now, it's saying, "The transparency of the fence is 50% or more on corner lots. Such fences may be placed within one yard." So it's saying it still has to be 50% or more transparency, is how this...
Yeah. Would you be kind enough to pull up the drawing of the center's property, please?
Yeah.
The way I read it is that this needs to be 50% transparency, because that's part of the front yard. And this has to be 50% transparency, because that's also the front yard.
That's how this reads.
Which is the way the current code is, right?
So actually, you can't have a privacy fence. This part of their yard can't be truly a private area, because you've got 50% transparency in your front yard. Okay, is that what's...
But that's not, I mean, I thought the whole reason we were going through all this was to make it on a side yard, so they could have a privacy fence.
Yes, that's correct. Is that not how it reads?
That's not how it reads.
Not how it reads.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you could read it that way, but...
Yeah, you gotta take into account I'm a bit of a meathead, so if I'm saying...
Sorry.
So I mean, really, what would be the easiest way would be to leave that as B, transparency of the fence is 50% or more, because that's not a change.
And then C.
They could always do that. And then on the corner lots, you know, some fences must be, I think we can tweak the language a little bit again, to maybe just clarify, like, it's a side yard on a corner lot.
Okay.
You know, we're gonna consider it a side yard. It's gonna allow for that, you know, instead.
Okay, so just clear up the language there.
Just clean that up just a little bit.
We're all on the same page of what we're allowing.
Yeah. If you tell me we are, we are.
We'll end up making that a C, and that'll just be a new add, because really, that's what you're adding, so...
Yeah, understood.
At least I think that's what the commissioners are wanting.
Yeah.
I personally think it flows better, but like I said, that's just my opinion.
Sure. Well, I mean, I think that just is, you know, we're not changing, I mean, if we're not gonna change the transparency part of it, or not gonna add the extra thing, then what would be the point of changing it at all?
Right. But it just seems a little gray area there.
You know, that's why we talk about it, you know, it helps us, because, you know, he's thinking one thing in his head after he's done all the research.
Sure.
And then we're all reading it going, well, we didn't do all the other research, and look at all these other ones, and so, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but we want it to be clear, of course.
Yeah, that's right. Because, I mean, because anybody reads it, you want them to make...
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, that's one of the biggest things we get questions about is fences, you know.
Sure.
Yeah, because the charging language of it says you have to meet one of those. So if you do A, B, C, you just go, I mean, A, B, or C?
A, or B, or C.
A, B, or C.
That's kind of how my mind is...
We just make it a C, and...
So what do you classify now, though, just so we understand? What do you classify as the front of a house for this? I mean, is it gonna be where your driveway is, or is somebody...
The way I would classify it would be where your front door is.
Okay.
So where your mailbox is, that's the front door. That's how most cities would view it, with a front of a house.
Can we put that in there on the corner lot, that it has to go off of the front door? That would be front of, so somebody didn't come in and say, well, I wanted this to be the front of my house.
This is my side, right. Well, that's a fair point, too. I think we can clarify that.
Because there's people have two doors.
Yeah.
I've got two doors. I don't have a corner lot, but...
But you have, some people have two doors on a corner lot.
Yeah. Ultimately, I don't think it's...
But there's four sidewalls. One of those two, but one of those two doors. So somebody's saying, this is the front of my house, but this could be the front of, you know, they have two entrances. So you gotta clarify...
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying. It's like, where the mailbox is, we'll go by the address thing. But we want to make sure it's worded so...
But I mean, that could be just another sentence to add, would be, you know, the front of the house is determined by the address.
Does it matter, though, because ultimately, they're required to come to this commission and get approval regardless?
I know, but...
So there might be a situation where their mailbox is on a road, where it'd be better off if their front yard was the other road, you know, from...
But if the city's clarifying it off the mailbox, then we want that in there.
Right. But then we're gonna end up with people getting variances, because, oh, this isn't really my front yard. Look at what my house looks like.
No, but then it's clarified that everybody knows where the front yard is. And then they can...
Well, we've got to establish that, on a corner lot, the front yard is both sides, right? So the way this is written is, we're allowing them to put it in one of the front yards, and they gotta come ask us approval for which front yard they consider in it.
We're taking that, we were considering a front yard, now we're not gonna consider that to be a front yard anymore. We're gonna consider that to be a side yard.
Right. Okay. So can you bring up the property on Fifth that put up their fence without permit?
Yeah.
I wanna know which one's the front yard on that one, because I'm guessing it's the one that they put it in, because that's where their driveway is.
That's where the door is.
I would just...
Well, they got a door on the left.
No, it's not on the door. The mailbox is on Manorville, so that's what I've considered. But we'll take a look.
Is it?
I think it is. But let's take a look. I don't remember exactly.
In the subdivisions, I don't think this is an issue, but in Old Casson, there's gonna be a lot of places where there's driveways on one side and a front door on the other side.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess, yeah, what does it say for the address?
It has a Fifth Street address, right. So that would be their front yard.
So they put their fence in their front yard.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, why don't we just leave it up to them to choose which one they wanna put it in, and we'll just approve it or not approve it based upon...
11 Fifth.
Reasons. Because they can't put it up regardless without our approval in their front yard, according to this, right? In their side yard, or front yard, or whatever, on a corner lot. Because in this instance, to me, it doesn't make much sense to put it on Manorville side, because nobody else on that side's gonna have a privacy fence along Manorville.
Well, I get what you're saying. And you're right. I mean, as in some of the older parts of town, where you have this...
In the subdivisions, they're built differently to kind of make sense for putting up fences. But, yeah, the older town is not like that.
You see what he's saying there, Ian?
Yeah.
So in this case, he's saying the front yard is actually on Fifth, and so that's where they put their fence up, which obviously, that was in contribution of the city code. So you sent them a letter, and they're gonna have to retroactively get this taken care of, or we'll have to cite them, which we don't really wanna have to do if we don't have to. But they probably were thinking of the front. Well, what they were trying to do here is avoid the sightline on the corner. So they couldn't have pushed it up much farther.
And they've got, they do have a front door, I believe, facing 57 there, which they probably never use.
Right. Probably not. Well, so I think that's, you know, that's another good clarification to add into this update, for sure. So...
And that's just something I think we, in general, I agree that the mailbox is probably the front yard, but there's gonna be instances like this one, I think, where...
Well, he probably has a mailbox, too, that's really, yeah. Because that's his address.
Right. But there's gonna be instances where it makes sense for him to put it, his side yard to be on Fifth rather than 57.
Right. Yeah.
And I don't know that we wanna have to do a variance, or somehow say that he even need a variance for that.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's why we're...
Rather than just kind of leave it up to a case-by-case basis.
Yeah.
No, it'd be a CUP. It'd have to be a CUP.
It'd have to be a conditional use permit, where you could put conditions on it, because a variance has to have unique...
Characteristics, right.
Characteristics. And there's a lot of corner lots that are like this, and it's not unique.
Well, I think that's what Ian talks about in his report, too, is that's why we're looking at changing the code, because otherwise, you'd have, every single corner lot would be a possible variance, which means that it's not a variance. It means it's a code problem, so, or a code situation, so... All right. Any other feedback for Ian on that?
Mr. Albers, did all that make sense? I just vomited a lot out of the table at you, and I don't wanna...
So...
It's all recorded. You can go listen to it again, right?
I don't, still, but we're all hearing, can respond to any questions he may have, as well.
Okay. So I'll make a third stipulation here, a C, where I'll make an exception for corner lots. But my question, I guess, is, do we want the property owner to be able to choose which front yard, or are we going to require that whichever side that the property is addressed has to be the open one?
Leave it as front yard, because they all got to go through a CUP process, like I'm saying, for us. So, I mean, that could be interpreted by the commission based on the parameters around that specific instance when it comes before the commission.
Gives us some flexibility to respond to whatever gets thrown at us, I guess.
The only issue, the only problem with that, no, I think that's the way to go, because most people are gonna push it to the edge. They're gonna have to get that CUP. But let's say I put it three feet back. I'm picking my front yard, and I didn't put in a three-feet setback, so now I don't have to worry about the CUP anymore. But...
It's in the side yard, one.
What's that?
For corner lots.
Right. But if I'm saying, if I'm saying, you know, change the code, I don't need a CUP anymore, because we changed the code to say that it meets one of those criteria, and then it's not in the, it's not in the, it's not in the right, you know, it's not in the right of way of the three feet. If they do a three-foot setback from the sidewalk, then it's not a problem.
Well, that's not how...
But it wouldn't be a problem. They'd have to get a CUP simply for having a fence in the front yard.
Of the corner lot. That's what this says.
Even if it's three foot off the property line.
Yeah, that's how it reads.
I guess the point is, my point is, like, if they're not going for the CUP period order, they're gonna even come in. They're just gonna do it.
Right, right.
Well, I mean, people do it anyway, apparently.
Right, no, I'm just, you know, but you're right. I think, you know, the way to go is, the way you talked about there is that, you know, that way you guys can evaluate, like, you'll get the map of the thing during the hearing, and you'll say, okay, yep, we think the front yard is X. And that's what you're gonna tell them as part of that process, like, that's your front yard. You know, and I think generally, my guidance would be, it's where you're addressed at typically. But that, in some of these weird situations, you're gonna have to make a judgment call on it. So that's probably fair.
Well, in general, you know, houses generally have a front, like, say, front door, that if you ask the general populace, well, what's the front of the house, they could say, that's that side, you know.
That one on Fifth is kind of interesting, because I would typically say the front door is on Manorville, because that's how the front door is on almost all of them along the...
Because if you go down, farther down Fifth, it's like Fifth and Fifth, there's another one that says, "Do not use this door. Please go to the other side."
Yeah.
And they have two doors.
Yeah, there's a door on both sides of the corner.
And there, you know. So which, so, you know, if they wanted to put a fence up, they're gonna say it wants off this side, but their address is off of this side, so...
And if there are those situations where it's a little bit of a gray area...
Right. No, that's what's, we're gonna have to give them our best guidance and say, hey, here's what I think the planning commission would say. Most likely, it would be where we see it being, you know, and that would make sense, because, I mean, typically, Ian or Linda or myself would meet with any of these people that come in with a permit, so... Does that make sense, Ian?
Otherwise, we'd need to survey all the situations in the whole city and try to thread that needle.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it, like Paul was saying, and most of it is in the historic part of town. It's more of the older homes in town. Because the newer subdivisions, most of those, although I have one in my neighborhood that's kind of on a corner, most of them have a, you know, very clear front door, because it's just a different style of construction nowadays, you know.
Anything else? Good place to start? Okay. This is a public hearing. So unless there's any more debate, I'll go ahead and up the public hearing. If either of you would like to come up and share any comments you have on this particular zoning amendment, or just talking about the zoning amendment piece of the puzzle at this stage.
I don't think I have anything else to say.
With that said, I'll close the public hearing. Unless there's any more discussion, gentlemen, I would look for a motion, please.
I would make the motion to move forward with the changes that we've discussed with Mr. Albers.
Have a motion to proceed with changes. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be our recommendation to City Council, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
So with that said, looking at our agenda here, have we fundamentally eliminated 4.0B, assuming the City Council agrees with us in some fashion, or should we still go through the process of that public hearing?
Um, go ahead, Ian.
I would say we should deny the variance, just because even if the council were to approve, or even if the council were to deny changing the ordinance, I still don't think it would fit a viable reason for a variance, just because if that's the case, we'd have to do it for every corner lot. And in that case, it's just not a unique...
Well, and I think, you know, the other reason to deny is it's been mooted by the recommendations you're making. So there's no reason to approve a variance, if you know it's been made moot by the change, so...
Well, in the case City Council disagrees with us, I don't wanna...
Well, in my case, City Council disagrees, it's their prerogative to make any, to moot anything that we do here, so...
So we're gonna leave it on the agenda and go through the process?
And then it sounded like Ian's recommendation would be to deny, so...
Gotcha. With that said, the next item on the agenda, pardon me, is a conditional use permit for a fence. We discussed this last month for the center property. Do we wanna go through the details again on that, sir?
Yeah, we can. So I'll just find it in the packet here. So this is the area that they've proposed to put their privacy fence. So with the proposed ordinance change, this would be allowed, a privacy fence in what's their front yard. Let's see, there's some utility boxes here, so they, you know, square off that corner a bit to allow room for that. So really, just the conditions on there are an acknowledgement of this utility easement. Actually, there's utility easements on all three sides, but just acknowledging that. And then the access easement agreements as well for each of the two neighbors. So with that, you could recommend approval with it, with those two conditions, plus a third condition, just saying that it wouldn't go into effect until the council approves the ordinance change that's proposed.
Any questions or comments before we open?
I'll also say that, since we tabled it from last meeting, we're getting close to that 60-day, 60-day rule. So I'll be sending out the automatic extension letter, just giving an additional 60 days, because we'll wanna make sure that we get the ordinance changed in time before the 60-day rule times out.
If there are no questions, I'll go ahead and once again open the public hearing. This is specific to the conditional use permit for the fence that the senators want to put up. If you have any comments either of you would like to make?
Additional stuff?
Okay. Go ahead and close the public hearing. Gentlemen, your thoughts?
Did you do a sightline review, just to make sure that we wouldn't be blocking any, you know, traffic? I think we discussed it the last meeting, that it was fine, but I just wanna verify.
Yeah, it doesn't violate any triangle thing.
That's what I thought we talked about, but that was a month ago.
If there's no other comments, I would look for a motion, please.
I'll make the motion to approve, as Ian suggested, with the condition that the ordinance gets changed.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be your recommendation as well.
All right. Thank you very much.
Go through the formality of a public hearing for the variance?
It's all right. It's good. We all, you know, the best part about it is there's a lot of transparency, and I think we really appreciate that part of the process.
Any comments on the variance?
Nope. Just that I would recommend denying the variance for the reasons that I've stipulated already. Just really doesn't fit the need for a variance, and with the proposed ordinance change, it wouldn't be necessary anyways, so...
Any questions? If not, I will open the public hearing on the variance, if either of you...
We would wonder about a refund on the, we paid about $800 to make this request. If the ordinance is changed, would it be possible to refund the fee that we had to pay in order to make the request? That would be the only thing, I think.
I mean, typically, you know, the money's been spent, because we have to publish in the newspaper. So the city doesn't, I mean, it's a pass-through, you know, the state requires us to publish notification in the paper for these public hearings, and that's where the cost is. So, I mean, I guess the answer would be no.
If there's nothing else, I will close the public hearing. If there's any additional comments, by all means. Otherwise, I would look for a motion, please.
Or make a motion to deny the variance.
Have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be our recommendation to the City Council, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'm afraid that's everything that would include you guys this evening. By all means, you're more than welcome to hang around if you wanna go through another fence proposal.
What would that, it would be fun.
Uh, next up is another conditional use permit for a fence. The Bakken, Backen family?
Bakken, I believe.
Bakken, thank you.
So these folks are down in South Fork. This request for a CUP is much more straightforward. Roll down to it here. So basically, they're just asking to extend a small chain link fence outwards from the rear of their house to each of the three property lines in the back. You can see here, they've got a few there. So with that, there's just the standard conditions that we add to it, the acknowledgement of the utility easements. There's just one on the, off of the rear property line, and then the access easement agreements for each of the, for each of the neighbors there.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Ian? If not, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. I will go ahead and close the public hearing, as we have no public.
Right.
Any additional thoughts or comments, gentlemen? Seems pretty straightforward. I agree with you. I would look for a motion, please. I'll make the motion to approve. Have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That would be our recommendation to the City Council, sir.
Thank you. I think Linda's gonna have to beef it up in the minutes here, like, with a lot of interplay between you guys debating, you know, kind of, you know, no.
We have been discussing and debating and arguing fences for some time.
No, and I think we're doing a good job. We're really getting it down, I'll tell you that much.
And staff brings us a nice report, and has done the legwork and...
I still feel our involvement in putting up a fence is no involvement. You know, we just kind of require everybody to let everybody else know what they're doing, and the process, process kind of goes forward.
Well, to their point, I mean, I think at some point in time, I hope the state changes the regulations on publication, because, I mean, it isn't cheap, but we have to publish it. You know, it's a pass-through. I mean, I know Ian didn't chime up when they asked for the refund. I had to answer that one, but that's okay.
We typically don't handle financial...
No, I know, I know, but...
But, I mean, it's hard, but from now on, if the ordinance changes...
Well, and when people come in, we do tell them. We say, you know, you're asking for this. There is no guarantee that it'll get approved. Well, and when we, when people come in, we do tell them, we say, you know, you're asking for this, there is no guarantee that it'll get approved. You know, we probably approve, I don't know, seventy-five or to ninety percent of a request, but, I mean, it's up to their, it's their risk if, if somebody says no. I mean, the variances, I tend to be a little bit more strict just because it, in my opinion, it has to be something that is, you know, is special to the property, if it's not. Now, I know Ian or Brad might disagree with me a little bit on interpretation, but that's always been, I've seen it. So for this last one, I think Ian, maybe you wanna talk a little bit about it, you know, Ian wants to do it Oxford Dictionary definition of what is a fence, right, Ian, is that what you're looking for here?
For our last item on the agenda.
Well, we, we just were discussing it last meeting, to know more exactly if, how we listed it.
And the basis of the comment was there are a lot of structures around town that could be perceived as fences, I didn't know if we had-
Like fifty-five gallon plastic barrels?
I have no idea what you're talking about, but I could see that being a potential question of what is a fence, so.
Yeah, so, in my review of the code, it doesn't seem that there's an actual concrete definition for what actually constitutes a fence. You know, there's like small bits and pieces in there that says, like, you know, if you have a decorative fence, like, it has to face outwards, or like, you know, you can't have like barbed wire or an electrified fence unless you're in like an industrial district. But as far as, you know, your fence has to be this material, that sort of thing, it's just not in the code at all, really. In my review of other city codes, just looking at the, the privacy fence thing, it's not really common to have like a concrete definition for what is a fence. I mean, I think the, the only like really concrete one that I found was from the city of Minneapolis. So theirs was, you know, it has to be like wood or brick or metal, but it can't be like reused wood, so no, like railroad ties or utility poles, no cables or ropes, you know, things like that, so.
I think our definition is almost like a negative definition, anything goes except when it might cause injury to someone else.
Right.
So for example, barbed wire or spikes or electrification or something like that, and we have had a couple of fences in town where somebody tried to, wanted to, you know, have electric fence. And so, a couple of times, I've had to go out and talk to him and say, hey, you gotta shut that off, you got neighbors that are little kids and you got, you know, I know you don't like your neighbor's dog, but this is not the way to go and do that.
Yeah.
Which, you know, but it's true, so. So, yeah, you know, and I've looked at it too, I think Ian's right, you know, a lot of times, we don't regulate it or we don't define it because it gives us more flexibility then, really, so.
Yeah, and to that point, I think if it's something that, you know, the city is requiring it for screening or purposes, purposes like that, I think, you know, we can put a little bit more meat into the argument and say, this doesn't really serve the purpose of screening, things like that, if we're doing like a site plan review, for example.
I was just kinda letting my imagination run a little bit and say somebody wanted to sell beer up at Cassin, you know, you know, the festival up in the park.
Yeah.
And we wanted to say, hey, you need to have a fence around your beer garden, do we have a requirement for a fence, so.
Sure.
If not having a fence or a negative definition for a fence keeps everybody's life a little bit easier, I'm all for it, in the same sense, if we wanna have a definition of a fence to clean up certain unique interpretations of what a fence can be.
Yeah, I actually found one interesting law case here, it was actually City of New Orleans versus Southern Auto Wreckers, and it was an early case, it's nineteen thirty-nine, and the, and the court there said that, cause the city of New Orleans had a very strict fencing code, and the court said that the, the ordinance was an arbitrary and unreasonable exercise of police power because the requirement of a tight board fence instead of a substantial fence built of other materials in no ways tends toward accomplishment of the objective for which the owner, the city's power was exercised in this case. In essence, they said, you can't require somebody to, you know, it's very hard for you to set design requirements on a, a fence and say, yep, you can't use plastic fence, even if it looks nice, you have to use a wooden fence. So, I mean, to me, like, that's where, you know, I think it'd be difficult for me to justify, you know, I think, like I said, the negative response is, it's a, if we see something that doesn't meet, we're gonna go out and tell them that it doesn't work. Whereas typically, we try to leave as much latitude as possible for people to do a good job of, of fencing, you know what I mean? If that makes sense.
It does, I understand. Like, like I said, for me, it's what makes everybody's life a little bit easier, I wasn't trying to add complication for the sake of complication.
No, and I wasn't at the last meeting, so I don't know exactly how your debate went on that, but it was interesting, I did look for some legal cases here and, and sort of, just to see what, you know, different neighbors have gotten into it with different people, and it's kind of interesting to see the legislation and all that sort of thing.
So, so I've got a couple of comments on both extremes there. Regarding that case where, what, it sounds like what you're summarizing is the city can't specify, like, how the fence is made or what it looks like?
In that case, it was, they were talking about the materials, so the city of New Orleans was requiring in a certain district, a certain material for-
So if we require screening, does that mean that they necessarily don't have to do exactly what we want, they can do something else that's screening?
I think we can require screening, I think we just would have a harder, harder time defining what the screening is, so for example-
Do we usually do that?
What's that?
Do we usually try and define what the screening is, or?
Um, it depends on the circumstances, there are some situations where we would, and there's, for example, like up by Casey's, where Casey's was built right next to a house, there were some requirements for some privacy screening there.
So our, our requirements would be something like seventy percent transparency screening of some sort?
Well, eighty percent right now, like, right now, we allow, we allow a privacy, I mean, a fence in your front yard if it has fifty percent transparency. So we already, we did set that requirement on that type of fence.
But, but like the one, he's talking about at Casey's, we required that it had to be a six foot solid fence to block-
Right, but they, so they, they-
Because the house was there and they didn't want trash and people running across the yard, so we-
Right, but wouldn't they chain link with like the slats and links or whatever suffice?
Yes, but they, but they chose-
Yeah, it wasn't-
They chose this because of the appearance.
I, I agree with that, I'm just saying, are, are we allowed to actually tell them, it must be solid, it must be wood, it must be six feet?
We just told them it had to be a six foot.
Well, I mean, and I guess it, it depends a little bit on the circumstance, so in a CUP, we could lay out something where Casey said, you know, if we said, this is your requirement, it has to be a solid fence, we might not be able to define the materials, but we might have, be able to say, hey, it has to be a solid fence, it doesn't, it can't even be a chain link with slats, because we don't consider it to be a solid fence.
So is cinder blocks solid fence?
You probably could consider that to be a solid fence, yeah.
Cinder blocks, stone wall is then considered a fence?
I think so.
Okay, cause I think you mentioned brick, right, so a brick wall, was in Minneapolis one?
Yeah.
As a material?
Bricks was allowed under their, under their definition.
But not stone, apparently.
No.
Well, we define wall. In the fencing one, it says a wall is made of nonliving material, typically brick, concrete, or stone, and may be used for screening in addition to grading retention or retaining walls.
So does a wall then have the same requirements as a fence, can I build a seven foot wall?
You can't build a seven foot wooden wall because it's not living.
Could I build a, a fully opaque stone wall in my front yard?
Why don't you do it, it's right as all over.
Now about a CUP.
Yeah, it's limited to six foot, actually.
No, because it still says farther down than that it can exceed six feet, as measured from the finished grade.
Okay, but in the front yard, we say a fifty percent transparency fence, but could I do a no transparency wall?
I would interpret that you can't, and that's what the-
I wanna make sure that everybody interprets that we can't.
That's what the planning commission is saying with their discussion earlier, is that we're gonna, this is gonna come up for individual conversations each time. I think that our goal is not to be making this more difficult, our goal is to make sure things look properly, I mean, properly done.
I, I'm not go, I wanna make sure that somebody, everybody looks at it and says, well, it doesn't say anything about me, I can build a three foot wall in my front yard out of stone, and I don't need any requirements because it's not a fence.
I can guarantee you there are people sitting at home right now coming up with ways to work their way around planning and zoning codes just because they want to do it.
Right.
And I hate to say it, I know who some of these people are.
But three foot doesn't matter.
Is a row of barrels a wall or a fence then?
Well, I would consider it to be a fence because it's porous, but, but I mean, you know, I think in some codes I've seen where fences and walls are considered to be interchangeable to a certain degree.
And that's, that's what I'm getting at, is-
And that might be something to take a look at.
For the fence ordinance, do we wanna also consider freestanding walls a fence? Something to think about, and then, anyway, so back, rolling backwards to the other extreme, you mentioned the beer garden thing, would, would just like stakes with a single rope be considered a fence for that situation?
I don't consider that to be a-
Like, that's not a fence, cause what's bearing, you can go over that, a six foot fence, you can, you can go over it, sure, but it's gonna take a lot more effort, but a little rope-
Yeah, if you look at one-
It's not gonna classify it as a fence.
If you look at what little thistle is-
So what about a three foot one, right?
It's gotta be six foot though, if you're gonna have a privacy. Three foot, you don't need a variance or a conditional for it.
Right, we were talking about, we're talking specifically about the beer garden?
You step over a three foot.
I, I agree.
So then it doesn't classify-
That doesn't mean it's not a fence. So, so, did, I think at the council not too long ago, we were talking about the outdoor area at the brewery, and they wanted to have a perimeter fence put in, right, but obviously, they're not putting in a, I assume they weren't planning on putting in a solid fence. They're putting a barrier of some sort to, to locate the perimeter of the outdoor area.
I wanna say it's a string of lights, or at least it appears to be comparable to a string of lights, and I haven't been-
I think in council, we agreed that that was acceptable, but we were not considering that a fence?
Well, so, I mean, I think we're talking about two different things, you're talking about the current status of the brewery, they have a string of lights, you're talking about what was gonna be at the park.
At the park, they wanted, we, the city wanted them to put a fence up for-
I'm, I'm trying to combine them both, right, so.
But it's two different subjects.
Yeah, I mean, so they had a special permit to sell in the park, which best practices, and my recommendation was that they have a fence. Now, on the fullness of time, the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust did not absolutely require that, so the council opted not to absolutely require it. So, I don't think they put up a fence as far as I know.
They did not.
Um, but it was a contiguous and compact area, it was defined in their permit by west of the pool, south of the, whatever. Um, in that case, there would have been options, and I mean, obviously, that's a special case because it's a special permit. I, and my recommendation would have been snow fence, which would have worked. I even think that barricades probably would have worked, if they would have had the mobile barricades, I would have considered that to be fencing it off, you're showing a distinction between the areas. As far as their regular property, the way it is right now, like, we haven't required any fencing there, really, I don't think that's a requirement that, um, when we talked to the state of Minnesota, they actually didn't require the fencing. So, we had asked the legion, for example, to do some fencing, and they chose to do so because it provides some separation for them, but it's not actually legally required for them to do that, at least that's my understanding of it.
Well, I thought part of their, their permit was that they had to have a cordoned off area for outdoor seating or something.
When it was actually approved, it wasn't included in their permit.
Okay, back to the, um, the park special permit, so if we would have included a fence, would we have included a definition of what the minimum fencing requirements were?
Yes, I think so, I think we would have probably given them options, I mean, that's what I said, I would have given them options, or the council could have given them options, but I think we would have said, these are some options.
Obviously, we want three foot fence, because like you said, we can step over it, but according to our code, a three foot barrier is a fence, which would be allowed in front yards. So I just, again, the definition of fence-
But at the park, that's a whole, that's a special permit that they have to get, so we can put anything on it we want, if they wanna accept it, they can.
Right, I'm just saying going forward, if we're gonna say we want them to have a fence on a special permit like that, we need to tell them what a fence is. We can't just allow the code because the code doesn't define it.
But we had planned on that, it was all laid out that we were gonna tell.
In the special permit process, I think it works well because the council can review it and you can set whatever criteria you want on it. Whereas with this, the code is set up so that it's standardized, so that anyone can look it up and it's not a big deal, they can just, they can talk to Ian and we can move forward. Special permits exist for special circumstances, exactly, so, and they're temporary, and that was the situation with the festival in the park, so. Good questions, though.
So we've agreed that a row of barrels is a fence?
It could be considered a fence.
I don't consider that permanent construction.
Is that what?
Does, does fence have to be permanent construction?
Well, it may be up for a fence, snow fence is important.
See, that's, right, see what I mean?
So, yeah.
So that's where, that's where you, I love the property.
We could be sitting in here until Friday debating whatever.
Well, that's what Linda's gonna do already. I mean, you could put in a, a row of planters on wheels and call it a fence, cause they have done it, and then roll them away for snow removal. So, you know, it's hard to, as much as you wanna say that a row of barrels is not a fence, it's hard to justify, cause, you know, as much as it doesn't look appeasing to some eyes, it does to others.
It, yeah, others view it as being, they're doing exactly what they want it to do, so it's fine.
And then they can tear it down to for snow removal or parking or whatever, so, so, yeah, cause a fence is not classified as permit, which-
If it was permanent, then we'd have to building permit.
Yes.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, it's over a certain height, yeah.
Well, the hearing will have some, you know, publication requirements, it'll cost me a hundred dollars, it's, anyway, it can be so bad, I don't really wanna do that, so.
Switching topics, less than sixty second update on your pursuits with traffic study downtown, have there been any updates, sir?
Uh, no, no updates really, I mean, I've-
Is that scheduled for next week or two weeks?
Yeah, scheduled for next week, or, well-
Once the roundabouts are done and open, then it does.
Yeah, so the latest news on the street, about the street, is that it'll open up on Friday.
Keeps pushing out farther?
I think they're, they're cashing their bets, I think they'll be able to open it earlier than that, but it's, they're telling people, you know, that was the official news on the media, it was Friday, just cause I think they wanna build, say they opened it early.
Under promise, over deliver, rule number one.
Yeah, well.
Wasn't it just three weeks ago, they said the twelfth? Under promise, over deliver, and they've lost a week in three weeks?
The weather, it's just, it's just terrible weather.
Originally, originally, it was supposed to have been done in July.
Yeah, fifteenth of July, right.
Cause I'm sure the weather all the rest of the summer was exactly what they predicted it was gonna be.
You know, there's a specific time when they get the painters in there, like I said, they were striping today.
They're striping, so.
The south end probably, I would guess, could probably open now, but it's just a matter of if they wanna open it all at once, which I appreciate, cause once, let's just get it all done.
They got the section, the section between Dollar General and the sixteen street finished?
I don't think that's striped, I haven't touched it, but it's paved.
It's all been paved.
Yeah, it was all paved last week, but the, the striping is the one that's been done.
The striping isn't done, but they striped the south side, so.
Yes, I'll be completing the first phase at the end of this month, and then the second phase in September, and then in October, I'll do a presentation of the findings.
Wonderful, good luck to your pursuits, sir.
Um, one, just note on that is that there was a request from some council members to review the traffic flow and traffic patterns and stop signs on Main Street, with an eye to possibly making the stop signs on those corners permanent, so that's something that may come up at a future planning meeting, just so you know, but, anyway. All right?
Anything else? All adjourned in the meeting, thank you all.
Thank you.